Be careful now.
Uh, thank you. Uh, good evening, everyone. So I have a question.
State your name, please.
My name is Cynthia Turnquist Jones. I live at 444 Seneca Avenue, Mount Vernon, New York. One zero five five three. I have a question. It's about, um, the formal policy and procedures for managing protests and events. Are there like conversations that take place and a meeting that takes place when you know that they're going to be events slash protests? I guess I'll do a last one.
No, you can turn on, turn on one of the other.
Last one, the question.
Oh, never mind.
So when the question was asked about, um, the civilian complaint and how you complain online, you can go to the police department, you can go to the, uh, public library, or you can go to the clerk's office. And then the question was asked, what is the action? And I heard that there is a letter and maybe days are taken away. Is there any professional development that the person has to attend? And that's it. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Council Lett, looking forward to working with you next year. Um, well, I can actually. Yep. Um, so to answer your question around managing protests, yes, there is a conversation. Um, and it depends on how it comes through. So if it is an event that goes through the formal process, which is most likely an event that, um, let's say the city is having an event at Memorial Field or something. It's a city sponsored event. Um, it comes through the formal process. It is then presented to city council, most likely in coordination with recreation department. Um, and then sort of the back details of the event, the people who will be in attendance, number of people, um, if there's entertainment, we get all of that. And then we're able to create a plan based on that. Um, that's sort of the easy part because you kind of know what you have. You have tickets that are available for sale. You can follow up on how many tickets are being sold kind of in real time. And you're also able to, um, get an idea of the social media field because you can check in on where people are, right? That's easy, not easy, but it's an easier route. Uh, and we have conversations about that. We meet, we meet the recreation, we sometimes bring in the promoter. Um, so we talk broadly about what those are. When we're talking about events that we are not aware of, let's say a protest. And I can say we have not had many of those lately. So of course now we say this and there'll be something, but, um, we talk about what the chatter is on social media. What do we hear? What are people saying? Where is it coming from? Um, it's sort of like an intelligence gathering opportunity. We go through and we make sure that all everyone is telling us what they hear, what they see, who's involved. Uh, are there any threats? Are there any known threats? Do we know anyone who's potentially involved? So we sort of look at it from a very macro level. But yes, there is definitely a conversation around managing protests. And from what we can tell from our, without a formal policy, that's sort of like the practice of what we do. Okay. Um, regarding civilian complaints and professional development. So yes, um, part of our disciplinary process is that yes, there could be a verbal warning, but it could also be some, the recommendation of training is almost always part of the process because training is considered discipline. Um, retraining is something that we like to always include. Maybe that they need to have more time with our training unit. Or, uh, we actually turn them on to an opportunity or training module about a particular topic. So yes, professional development is, um, just a natural part of our, um, our disciplinary matrix.
You can read it, clerk. Or deputy clerk, whoever just can access it easier.
Uh, Deputy Chief Addison wrote a message on Zoom. He wrote, yes, members of the police department meet regularly for scheduled events and develop operations plans for each type, city fest parades, funerals. There are also operations plans and meetings for vigils. There has not been a quote protest since June 2020 events on City Hall. Plaza are usually monitored, but are not usually staffed. Events at Memorial Field are also staffed and have operations plans.
Councilwoman Lett, do you have any additional questions or any clarification? No, 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 you gotta come to the mic. I'm sorry.
Just come to the mic.
Uh, thank you for that, uh, that clarification. Just want to know about, uh, Brush Park. Is that also included in the conversations of events?
Those who couldn't hear, uh, C, uh, DC nodded, but it sounds like Captain Addison, Deputy Chief Addison has comments?
Yes, uh, we normally staff, uh, Brush Park events as well. And there are operations plans. So all scheduled events, we have an operations plan. Uh, usually we have a certain number of staff based upon how big the crowd is. Uh, but it's also based upon what the type of event is. So events that are likely to go and cause, uh, increased numbers of people not from Mount Vernon, from to have higher staffing. Uh, concert, uh, versus a football game will have more police officers because the football game tends to be family oriented, younger people. There's no alcohol that's involved. So it's completely, yeah, it's completely dependent upon the event, but we evaluate each type of event, uh, draw operations plans up, have conversations with the event planners. Uh, that occurs for every event.
Thank you, council members. So you said you were good. DC Lackerd, I appreciate you coming out with your team.
No, no.
And we have Council McGlynn.
I just, um, since we have a lot of the police leadership on the line, there's a couple of things that I wanted to ask, uh, regarding the aware room. And, uh, a major incident happened today between Gramerton and, uh, Center, Center Street. And I'm finding that because of the close of some businesses in Fleetwood, that criminals are becoming more brazen, right? And because there's no people walking around as much, I, I think that, you know, criminals are really taking advantage in those, in that area right now. So with the aware room, how can we utilize that? And where are we with the aware room? Are we able to get increased police activity in that area for the existing, uh, business owners over there? And that's basically all I had to ask.
So I have comments, but I will defer to Deputy Chief Addison to comment on the camera program that we have that's connected to the aware room, that that might also give you some insight to where we are with, with the other room.
Yes, we have community cameras. They are not as plentiful, uh, in certain parts of town. Uh, we also have something called edge devices that connect into aware. Uh, they're not mandatory for restaurants at this time. Therefore, the events that occurred inside of the business would have not have been captured. Uh, there are license plate readers all throughout the city. Uh, most of them are ours. Uh, some of them are the county's, but we have access into the county, uh, license plate readers as well. We have the ability to go and utilize license plate readers that are in Bronxville and in Yonkers, uh, that touch a border, uh, and we use those regularly. As to the ability to go and regularly staff walking posts, uh, it does occur from time to time. Uh, however, that is also very resource dependent. Uh, sometimes the extra staffing is on a midnight. Sometimes the extra staffing is on a day tour. Sometimes the extra staffing is on the four to 12. So we can't sit there and say every tour that there's going to be somebody that's on a walking post. And then we can't go and guarantee that it would be at one particular spot. Sometimes they'll be on Prospect. Sometimes they'll be on Fourth Avenue. Sometimes they'll be in Fleetwood. Sometimes they'll be on Gramerton Avenue.
So, and I also want, thank you Deputy Chief Addison. I also want to comment that, you know, it's our goal to the point of you mentioned about the aware room. We are really trying to be a digital city with limited resources. It makes sense for us to invest in the digital aspect of it so that we can use that to fight crime, identify challenges. Uh, to Deputy Chief's point, a lot of it is based on camera availability and figuring out where to deploy those cameras in the right locations. Um, it does not mean that, and we could, we could use the community's help with that. I mean, we could actually run data and we have our, um, aware room until telling us where some of the crime is happening, but maybe a conversation with the business owners about maybe the challenges that they feel and how we can help. We also have a Ring camera where we have residents that have their own Ring camera. Sometimes we get really good content and data just from off of personal Ring cameras. Um, so individuals that have those, there is a process where they can register their camera on our website and then it will allow us to know on the street, this is where there's a Ring camera. So this particular crime happened here. How can we then, now we know who to reach out to. Instead of us having to canvass a street, we know that there's cameras here, there's cameras here. Let's reach out to them and see if they maybe got a, they caught something or they saw something on their cameras. So really about just kind of thinking a little bit, you know, working with less and just kind of being, you know, working smart and not hard, as they say. But yes, to that point, it is challenging, but when we hear those, those instances that come up, we need to figure out how to work together. So thank you for, um, bringing that up and it's something that we can talk about in-house tomorrow.
Is there any, um, change in the schedule of, um, staffing in the aware room? I know that we were starting out Monday through Friday. Are we going to bring on, um, anybody during the weekends or maybe change their schedules a little bit so that the weekends are covered? Is that even necessary?
Yeah, that's a ongoing challenge that we have with staffing. Uh, we're going into the holiday season, so trying to figure out how to deploy resources correctly. We do have crime analysts that are in the, the aware room. Um, so we will be looking to put out another test so that we can have a crime analyst, more crime analysts apply and we can put them in there. So if individuals are interested in, in doing crime analyst work, that's also an opportunity to learn. Um, we are looking to civilianize that so that we don't have all police officers in there. Obviously a police officer will be in the aware room and there's sort of like a supervisor, but the goal is to make it so that we have civilians that are highly trained to know how to, you know, do crime analyst work. It also helps us on the budget.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much for your time. I know this was a longer report, but, uh, sometimes we have to go through it. Again, I welcome the opportunity to come and talk more about what we're doing at Wellness and, um, being able to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, DC. Have a great night. All right, folks, we're going to get into the comment from the public. Um, so I'm going to call, uh, everyone up by name. You got, when you come up, you have four minutes to speak. Um, when you come up, please state your name and address for the record. If, um, and then all of the council members will respond to everyone after each speaker has gone up. All right, um, so I'm going to go to the list now. The first person on is Kenneth Miller. Is Kenneth Miller online? All right, uh, I'm gonna go to Mr. Norman Parkinson. Just make sure that the red dot is on. That means the mic is on and you can speak into the mic, sir. Thank you.
Yes, good evening.
Good evening.
Um, my name is Norman Parkinson. I'm a resident of Nine Jackson Street. This is by Union Lane and Union Avenue. Um, by the Edward Williams Elementary School. The purpose of me being here this evening, back in late September, the school district, from what I was told, um, have decided to make two parts of the street, Union Lane and a part of Jackson Avenue, Jackson Street, reserve parking for faculty of the school. Therefore, residents in the neighborhood, people who live on Jackson Street and surrounding, um, streets, these two streets are no longer available for parking for us during hours of eight to four P M. And also there's no, no more street side, um, street cleaning on that side of the street and both Union Lane, Jackson Street running from east to west. Yes. So I'm here to ask a question. Was the city council aware of this action? And secondly, is the school district has this authority to reserve streets, public streets for the faculty, um, faculty of the school? And if not, what will the, um, the city council do to remedy this issue? Also, even with those, um, sides of the street being reserved, the few parking that is left on the other side of Jackson Street is also taken by, um, faculty of the school. I work from three to, um, seven to three. And there are times when I get home at three thirty. And if I should follow the rules that they have set there with the parking, I would have to go on the next block or wait until four o'clock before I get a spot even in front of my house. So I want to know if you guys were aware of this change in the street parking in the area?
All right, so sir, after all of the speakers, the council members will respond.
Okay.
All right, gonna call up Ms. Cynthia Crenshaw. Is she online? I don't see her in-house. Um, I say yay or nay? No? All right, uh, Jerry O'Nunes. Beatrice Miller. I'll go through one more time. Kenneth Miller. Cynthia Crenshaw. Jerry O'Nunes, Nunez. And Beatrice Miller. All right, Mr. Parkinson, it looks like you're going to get it answered quickly. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and start with Councilwoman Gleyton.
Okay, so that's very interesting that that's happened. Do you mind coming up to the podium just one more time? I just want to be clear on, uh, a few things. Uh, the street cleaning that is not happening is not happening on Jackson Street?
Yes.
Okay.
On the side of the street that is taken by the school, school district.
Okay. And that's, uh, that side is Union Lane or Union Avenue?
This is Jackson, Jackson, West to East.
Okay, got it.
Side that is, um, next to the school.
Okay, got it.
Next to the school property, that side of the street, there's no longer streets.
And you said that the school has placed signs up. Are they paper signs?
No.
They're legitimately printed signs?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. So this council does not know anything about that. We did not, I know for a fact that we did not approve that. But I, I did look up in the charter and it does say that the police commissioner could potentially, you know, alter parking and he has the authority to do so. It, I don't know if it's come up to, I, I don't, I don't think that's the case, but we're going to inquire about it. And I would like you to leave your email with our legislative assistant, um, Antoinette, and we'll find out about that. And I will alert DPW to the street, uh, cleaning issue.
Okay.
Okay?
There's one more question I'd like to ask.
I'm sorry, uh, your time to ask questions is over. We'll take a break after so you can.
You can, um, if you don't mind, Madam President, when you're giving Antoinette, uh, email, you can add your additional question in there and if we could address it, we'll address it, okay? Thank you.
All right, Councilman Boxel.
Yeah, this, uh, this, this is like fascinating to me because, um, I, like you, I, I don't know if they could do that, you know? And this is the first time I'm hearing about it. And I, I do have, uh, a question for you, so if you could come back. Um, in this, the, since, you said, when did this start happening? When?
This started at the end of September.
So just this school year is the first?
Yes, this school year, yes.
Um, and to your knowledge or you, did you observe any one violating this new street sign? And is there any ticketing going on or any, um, enforcement of the, the new parking policy on that, on that street?
Well, that was, that was something that I wanted to find out if that was, you know, if it was, it was an enforceable regulation by the city.
You haven't observed any cars being ticketed or?
At, at this point, no. Again, I'm not in the era during that period of time.
So it could have been and you just want to know.
Right, I'm not, I'm not aware.
All right, um, so obviously we're going to definitely look into this, so thank you.
Okay, um, Councilman Potte.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, thank you for coming. Uh, there's one question I have and I'm texting the police commissioner now just to figure out what the next step is. Uh, what's the exact address? Do you have an address? I know that you gave it before, but if you could give it again.
So the school is located at Nine Union Lane. This is the Edward Williams Elementary School.
Sure.
Um, they have taken Union Lane across from the school, Jackson Street that runs parallel to the school, east to west. That side that goes along the school line, those two street, you know, side of the streets that, 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 that are taken.
Got you. So as Councilwoman Gleyton said, that we're going to follow up. If for some reason, uh, you don't hear from us, please follow back up with us. Again, you have our aides' contact information, so feel free to reach out to her if there's further questions that you have.
Okay.
But, but we will definitely follow up on this. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Parkinson, if he can stay.
Sure, um, Councilman, uh, Thompson.
Thank you, um, yes, I'm aware of this and, um, I spoke with you, um, briefly. And I also had you speak to interim principal, um, Greg Casey. What was the result with that?
I got a chance to speak to him. I went there twice, three times.
Three times?
Never able to speak to him.
Okay.
Yeah, I was never able to make contact with the principal. I went there three times and he was always busy in a meeting, so I said, you know.
Okay, because I did speak to Mr. Parkinson, um, briefly about this and I said that did not come through the council, right? I.
Right, that's what you informed.
I told you that did not come through the council. Um, we did not give permissive, um, actions for that. Um, and then I sent him in to speak to interim principal Gregory Case, Greg Casey from, um, Edward Williams School. And, um, you're saying that they refused or they said that they were in a meeting?
Each time I go there trying to speak to him, there, I was told he was in a meeting or I have to make appointment and I went there trying to, trying to go through the process of making appointment, was never able to do so.
Okay, so we'll follow up with this tomorrow and then we'll get some resolve.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Parkinson, thank you for coming out tonight. Um, so to answer your question, no, I didn't know either. So that's the five of us who didn't know about it. But it typically, a street sign typically wouldn't come through council. Um, the only time things will come through councils, for example, when we, uh, stop traffic flow through, uh, this street here on the side of City Hall. So typically the DPW commissioner is working with PD. Uh, there might be a traffic concern, there might be emergency vehicles, but it sounds like it was for the school, so I don't know the school to have the, um, equipment. Do they have the equipment to make signs?
No, apparently, um, interim principal Gregory Casey has been working along with, um, DPW Commissioner Demonte Bush. And I don't know, um, what resolve they came up with, but I'll, um, we can speak with them tomorrow and see what's going on. Because there's also, uh, a pricing for taking up parking as well and if everything needs to be followed through.
Yeah, so I say that to say it, I'm not saying that the school did it on their own fruition, right? They may have been working in collaboration with someone from the city. It just isn't this body, right? So they possibly be working with Commissioner Bush, as he said. Um, but I think it's important to note, if you also speak to, and I'm sure they're going to speak to, uh, Commissioner Bush as well, um, Commissioner Bush can do a study in that area as well to figure out what the best solution is because it's, it has to be a win-win for, for both, um, uh, for, for the teachers and also for the, the neighbors. Um, so that's the only thing I add, but I heard Potte and Gleyton said that they'll follow up. Um, so you're in good hands, uh, and if you need anything, you can come back and let us know or contact Antoinette. Thank you. Um, Council, are we ready to move into the referral session? Are you, eh, maybe? Nay? All right, legislation in public works.
Ready, Madam President? Okay.
Publication, uh, legislation in public works.
Acoustics are bad in here. Item number one, Management Services, Department of Management Services, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute the New York State Department of State Grant Contract, T one zero zero three four nine four, for the reimbursable purchase of a replacement UPS backup battery for the Mount Vernon Police Department. That is on the agenda. Item number two, Department of Public Works, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of downtown trash receptacles for business districts. I have an update on that if you'd like. Hold on. You had asked about that, um, being bid?
Yeah, I said it wasn't procured properly.
So item number two. Okay, so for item number two, three quotes are on file. Trash receptacles fall under the cooperative purchasing agreement, which allows the city to leverage pre-bid contracts and pricing available through participating municipalities and vendors.
Um, so where's the cooperative contract in this referral letter? How do we just know that they're working with a cooperative, uh, contract? So per this referral letter, they didn't go through the procurement process.
Uh, we have, I believe we have Commissioner Bush online.
Not a problem. The, the referral, the contract needs to be cited in the referral letter so they, we know that there's an exception to our procurement policy. Commissioner Bush, are you online?
Don't see him online.
All right, you want to come back to that one?
Yeah, we can go back to that. Or if you, I, I can call for it too.
No, no, you're the chair. I just won't support it, but you can do as you please.
All right, item number three, Department of Public Works, an ordinance authorizing the Department of Public Works to issue a request for qualification for en-qual citywide pavement, striping, roadways, markings and curb paint maintenance services. That is going to be called for. Item number four, Department of Public Works, an ordinance authorizing the Department of Public Works to issue a request for proposals for the modernization and repair of the Gramerton Avenue Roundabout Fountain. That is being called for. Item number five, Department of Public Works, an ordinance amending Chapter one forty, Article one, Section one forty dash four of the Code of the City of Mount Vernon, entitled Garbage and Rubbish Collection, to authorize a red tag bulk item disposal section. That is on the agenda. Item number six, Public Works, Department of Public Works, an ordinance authorizing the establishment of a red tag bulk item disposal program administered by the Department of Public Works. That is on the agenda. I did inquire about combining both and was recommended that we leave them separate.
So, Councilwoman Gleyton, the issue with number five wasn't just the combination of the two items, it's that the request is to authorize DPW to begin drafting the amendment. We don't need, we can't authorize them to be, I mean, they can start drafting the amendment. We still need to approve it.
Will you come back to that one?
Sure.
Thank you. Item number seven, a local law number of twenty twenty-five, a local law of the city council of the city of Mount Vernon, New York, establishing an administrative search warrant procedure to be used in conjunction with local law number six of twenty twenty-four entitled A Local Government Code Enforcement Program. That is on the agenda. As for item number, um, number six is a. number six, is it possible to take that line out regarding them amending on their own?
So what is the amendment? When are we going to see the amendment that they want to make to the code?
Okay, it was my misunderstanding, so I'm just texting the commissioner now.
I mean, let me take a look at the legislation as drafted. Is it, is the code fleshed out in there? Assistant Corporation Counsel?
I have to see it, I have to pull it up. I'm not sure that it is.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, if you guys feel comfortable, you can go ahead and put it on. I'm just not, I don't have complete cover. All right, do we want to switch committees and come back to you when you get a response? All right, we can go ahead and Public Safety and Codes?
Thank you, thank you, Council President. Item number eight, An Ordinance Authorizing the Acceptance and Award of Requests for Proposals, Number Four, for Third-Party Construction Inspection and Consulting Services to Lobella Associates and Etiger Engineering Associates. That is on the agenda. As a point of clarification, I did speak to the building commissioner today. We currently do not have these services. I mistakenly thought that they were already under contract. Item number nine, from the mayor's office, An Ordinance Authorizing the Creation of the Position of Data Officer Within the Department of Buildings. This currently is on the, this currently is on the agenda. I was not able to get clarification from the mayor's office on the points brought up during the working session. Is there a preference for this to be called for and then brought back up at our next meeting?
No, I think they were able to fix it. I'll just check to see.
Or is there further information?
They were able to fix it, so you can put it on.
Okay, so that's A. Item number 10, Department of Public Safety, An Ordinance Authorizing the Mayor to Enter Into an Agreement with the Westchester County Department of Corrections for the Reimbursement of Prisoner Transportation Services for the Years 2025 and 2026, is on the agenda. Item number 11, An Ordinance Authorizing the Suspension of Parking Meter Enforcement in Certain Municipal Parking Lots and Garages to Promote Holiday Shopping from December 8th through 24th, 2025, and to include New Year's Eve, December 31st, 2025, is on the agenda.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Which parking lots, how do we know? And how do the residents know? Not to pay?
One second. Let's check the legislation. One second. The legislation does have the four different lots. I can follow up with the commissioner to make sure that they do notify residents, but it'll be South Fifth Avenue, North Third Avenue, Roosevelt Square, and East Prospect Avenue.
So not Sydney?
Deputy Chief, are you still online?
I am online.
Do you guys put bags over the meters, or is there another method?
Yes, we put bags over the meters, we posted on social media, and it's also on the city's website, has been for every year for the last, and we checked 35 years.
Thank you.
So we're not, we're not doing Sydney, not by Grammington?
Is that not the North Third Avenue lot?
That's Lot 8. That's included in the legislation.
My bad, thank you.
So that's item 11. Item number 12, Public Safety, An Ordinance Authorizing the Award of a Contract for the Red Light Violation Photo Enforcement and Monitoring System is on the agenda. Item number 13, from Public Safety, An Ordinance Authorizing Payment to Tri-Tech Software Systems, formerly Central Square, for CAD and RMS software use covering the period March 1st, 2025 through May 15th, 2025, is on the agenda. There's one point of clarification that I have. This is the last payment that we're going to owe Central Square, correct?
Correct. We went out of contract with them on March 1st, 2025, and no longer use their software.
Got it, just wanted to triple verify that. Thank you. And item number 14 and 15, there was a question by Council President on whether either, whether we need both of these?
It was resolved, it's an administrative thing, to make sure that everything is signed accordingly, so you can leave them as two.
Got it. Item number 14 is on the agenda. A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Mount Vernon adopting an ordinance amending the city code to increase the maximum permitted driveway width. And item number 15, An Ordinance to amend Chapter 227 Streets and sidewalks of the Code of the City of Mount Vernon to increase the maximum permitted driveway width from 12 lineal feet to 18 lineal feet. And, that's all I have.
Sounds good. Councilwoman, are you ready for us? Or do you want to, all right, legislation in public works?
Yes, okay. Commissioner Bush, you on the line?
Yes, I'm here, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, the question is regarding, let me get to the right one. Item number six, The Department of Public Works, an ordinance authorizing the establishment of a red-tagged bulk item disposal program administered by the Department of Public Works, and your ability to amend that, is that, is it number five?
Uh, yeah, number five.
Sorry, number five. My apologies. An ordinance amending Chapter 140, Article 1, Section 140-4 of the Code of the City of Mount Vernon, entitled Garbage and Rubbish Collection, to authorize a red-tagged bulk item disposal section. And, your question is, Madam President? Amending it? And what the amendment is?
The letter requests to authorize DPW to begin drafting the amendment of Section 140 to 4, 144. And we, you don't need our authorization to, we need the language in the section. What's the amendment to the section?
Yeah, there should have been a separate piece of legislation that was submitted with that, and explained the actual amendment.
Yeah, this is the amendment. Number five is the amendment, number six is the approval of the program.
So the language was in the actual amendment? Was there something missing from it, or?
Is everyone else comfortable with it? Are we good, or just? Commissioner Bush, are you talking about the report?
No, I'm a little confused. So the actual language that we were amending in the code, it was submitted with that amendment letter. Was that not received, or?
There was a report submitted with that amendment letter, the Refused Sustainability Fee Study.
Yeah, so, what are you guys actually looking for? Is it more information, or?
So, my question to you, so you're trying to create a red-tag program, but the information that you submitted with the red-tagged bulk program was a sustainability report. Was that what you intended to submit, or was there a misunderstanding?
No, yeah, the actual sustainability report was the information that we derived it from, but the actual information was included in the letter for the legislation, for the amendment.
Okay, let me just see.
Where it specified in an outline the section of the code and the added language that should be in the code.
So, you, all right. This letter, it says an attachment in draft amendment language. Did you submit that?
Yeah, so everything was submitted.
We don't have that. All right, so are we supposed to be defining, in this legislation, are we supposed to be defining what is considered the bulk, bulk items?
Correct.
Right.
Which was included in the, in the letter itself.
Yeah, so that's what I was, what I'm saying to you is that the legislation that is drafted replicates your referral letter. It doesn't have like the weights, et cetera, in it, and I'm saying this legislation needs to be built out so that people know what exactly has to get a red-tagged bulk item sticker.
Yeah, all of that information was submitted. Everything, it outlined that there was a price fee schedule, and it identified which bulk items are in which category. That was all submitted.
Okay, what I'm saying is it might be a misunderstanding, so do you have, you have specific weights and things that identify what the bulk item is?
That is correct.
Right, so that needs to be built into this legislation. So I'm speaking to you and the Law Department at the same time, right? We can't pass this because it doesn't have enough information, and the public won't know, or a question of them, so DPW goes around putting red tags on things, they're going to get very frustrated and say, you passed a legislation, and we don't even know the rules. That's what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, so it must have been a mishap with the actual, I don't want to say the Law Department, but there was attachment with it that outlined the definition.
Yeah, I see in your referral letter, you give an example of some language that's in it, but that's not in our actual legislation, right? So I think your department has to work with the Law Department to build this out, and ideally, you don't have to wait until the next meeting. You can pass it on to the council members so that we can take a look at it before the next meeting and see if we need to work out any kinks.
Okay, sounds good.
All right, so my recommendation would be to hold both programs, I mean, both legislations until we get this fleshed out.
Okay, so we're calling for it on the floor, or you want to?
Yeah, if you put it on the agenda, we can, we can hold it on the floor.
Okay. Got it?
Sorry, I didn't mean to confuse everybody.
Five and six? Oh, item number two. Item number two, which I put on the agenda, Department of Public Works, An Ordinance Authorizing the Purchase of Downtown Trash Receptacles for Business Districts. The response to that? Hold on, I'm picking it back up again, hang on a second. Here it is.
So Councilwoman Gleason said that, you said that you have three quotes, and that this is on a cooperative contract. However, your referral letter mentions nothing about a cooperative contract, so according to your referral letter, this doesn't abide by our procurement policy. The quotes are not enough because it's over the amount. So you had to put the cooperative contract in the referral letter so that we can build it into the legislation, because when people look back on this, they would need to know why we approved this, this number with just three quotes. That make sense?
Got it.
I see we got our procurement manager here. Can you help them pull that number so that they include it in the amended letter? Thank you so much.
So do you want to call for this one also until that legislation is put together properly?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bush.
Thank you.
All right, Finance and Planning?
Yes, number 16, from the Controller's Office, An Ordinance Authorizing Controller to enter into agreement with Twilio for the provision of SMS services in connection with UKG telestaff. That's on the agenda. 17, An Ordinance Authorizing Controller to Enter Into Agreement with Prime Force for the Archiving of UKG Workforce Time and Attendance Data. That's on the agenda. 18, An Ordinance Authorizing the Mounting of a Portrait of Former Controller Marine Walker in the City. That's on the agenda. And to answer your question, Madam President, from Monday...
I know, he included the funding source.
He included the funding source, and in the Controller Darren Morton's letter, he says that if the council should approve this request, the Controller's Office will coordinate with former Controller Walker for the donation of the portrait and its installation in accordance with city protocols. Any costs associated with this installation will not exceed $750 and charged to the equipment line set forth, so it's going to be covered. All right, so number 19 was going to be held. We're going to speak to the Controller about more specificity of the, of the legislation. And number 20 is my add-on from Department of Planning and Community Development, An Ordinance Authorizing the Transfer of Funds within the Department of Planning and Community Development to allocate for payment for the ESRIGIS invoice. That's going to be on the agenda.
Awesome, ready for legislative session? All right, can we have a roll call, clerk?
Yes, Councilman Box Hill?
President?
Councilwoman Gleason?
Here.
Councilman Potte?
President and here.
Councilman Thompson?
Here.
Council President Brown?
Here.
All right, legislation in public works.
Item number one, Department of Management Services, An Ordinance Authorizing the Mayor to Execute the New York State Department of State Grant Contract, T-1003494, for the reimbursable purchase of a replacement UPS backup battery for the Mount Vernon Police Department. So moved.
Second.
On a question? Harry Dunn, roll call.
Councilman Box Hill?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gleason?
Aye.
Councilman Potte?
Aye.
Councilman Thompson?
Aye.
Council President Brown?
Aye.
Item number two, Department of Public Works, An Ordinance Authorizing the Purchase of Downtown Trash Receptacles for Business Districts. That is being held on the floor. Item number three, Department of Public Works, An Ordinance Amending Chapter 140, Article 1, Section 140-4 of the Code of the City of Mount Vernon, entitled Garbage and Rubbish Collection, to authorize a red-tagged bulk item disposal section. That is being held on the floor. Okay, next one.
Oh, Councilwoman, I forgot to ask you, why were the RFPs being held? Any particular reason? RFP? That's for the pavement signing and also the, the roundabout?
What happened?
Yeah. I asked you, why was the RFP for the street pavement signing held, I mean, called for? And why was the RFP for the Grammington Roundabout called?
Because I had time to go over all of it with Commissioner Bush.
Okay.
So I told him I was holding it until we can, until I can have a better understanding of what we're doing and how we're approaching that.
Got you.
And where the funding's coming from.
Thank you.
Item number four, Department of Public Works, An Ordinance Authorizing the Establishment of a Red Tag Bulk Item Disposal Program that is being held on the floor. And item number five, City Council, Local Law Number of 2025, a local law of the City Council of the City of Mount Vernon, New York Establishing an Administrative Search Warrant Procedure to be used in conjunction with Local Law Number Six of 2024, entitled A Local Government Code Enforcement Program. That is, so moved.
Second.
Second.
On a question? Um, on a question? Hearing none, roll call.
Councilman Box Hill.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gleason.
Aye.
Councilman Potteet.
Aye.
Councilman Thompson.
Aye.
Council President Brown.
Aye. Alright, um, thank you, Councilwoman Gleason, Public Safety and Code.
Thank you, Council President. Item number six, from Department of Buildings and ordinance authorizing the acceptance and award of requests for proposals. Number four, for the third-party construction inspection and consulting services to Labella Associates and Edinger Engineering Associates, so moved.
Second. On the question?
On the question.
Yeah, on the question, um we, we didn't, it's not going to Edinger. Isn't it going to only Labella?
It's going only to Labella, right.
So does, the legislation doesn't say that, I, I don't have the legis- let me see if I can pull it up on this, uh, I just wanna make sure the legislation is not rewarding it to both of them. Yeah, it has, oh man, uh, this, this either needs to be amended on the floor um because it's awarding it to both of them. Or this needs to be called for so that it can be adjusted for the next meeting.
So, I spoke to the building commissioner.
No, no, it's not about the building commissioner.
No, I get it, I get it, but this is a critical item. Um, they need to get inspections done next week. And so if there's some way we can amend this on the floor, that'll be helpful. Um, yeah, this is a massive error because it does award the contract to both.
So if, if, here's what we'll do, let's skip this item, come back to it, if you can just go through and redline so that we know what we need to amend on the floor, um, and then, will that work? Is, who has the actual legislation for?
I haven't, so basically every reference to Edinger should be taken up.
Yeah, but I want them to take a look so that it's not just that, it, they might be pronounced or something like that.
This rectum two, section one, definitely needs to be changed. What they were trying to convey, which wasn't accurate, is that there were two responses to the RFP, right? But yeah, to your point, the only, only one got awarded, so.
Alright, you wanna come back to that one?
Sounds good, item number seven, Mayor's Office and ordinance authorizing the creation of the Position of Data Officer within the Department of Buildings, so moved.
So move, I'm second, I'm sorry.
Uh, on a question? Hearing none, roll call. That's right, roll call. Uh, oh, we on number three. Oh, I don't have that one, sorry.
Councilman Box Hill.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gleason.
Aye.
Councilman Potteet.
Aye.
Councilman Thompson.
Aye.
Council President Brown.
Aye.
Item number eight, Department of Public Safety and ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Westchester County Department of Corrections for the reimbursement of prisoner transportation services for the years twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six, so moved.
Second.
On a question? Uh, hearing none, roll call.
Councilman Box Hill.
I'm gonna abstain from this.
Councilwoman Gleason.
Aye.
Councilman Potteet.
Aye.
Councilman Thompson.
Aye.
Council President Brown.
Aye.
Point of clarification for, for number eight, do we need a reason for the abstention or no?
Alright, um, this, this contract is currently at my desk on, at the county, so I'm just gonna abstain.
Thank you, Councilman Box Hill.
Thank you.
Item number nine, Department of Public Safety and ordinance authorizing the suspension of parking meter enforcement in certain municipal parking lots and garages to promote holiday shopping from December eighth, twenty twenty-four, I'm sorry, from, from December eighth to December twenty, through December twenty-fourth in twenty twenty-five, from eight AM to eight PM and to include New Year's Eve, December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, so moved.
Second.
On the question? Hearing none, roll call.
Councilman Box Hill.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gleason.
Aye.
Councilman Potteet.
Aye.
Councilman Thompson.
Aye.
Council President Brown.
Oh, alright, we'll come back to that, we're gonna go ahead to finance and planning.
Wait.
Whoa, 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 we got three more.
Oh, sorry, I'm not doing great at multitasking tonight.
Me neither, um.
Go ahead.
We're voting on number nine, it's up to you.
Where, where, on the question?
Number nine, we need your vote.
Oh, aye.
Thank you.
Item number ten, Department of Public Safety and ordinance authorizing the award of a contract for a red light violation photo enforcement and monitoring system, so moved.
Second.
On the question? Hearing none, roll call.
This is ten.
This is ten.
Thank you, uh, Councilman Box Hill.
Um, I will say um kudos to Corporation Council for really negotiating a extremely more than fair contract for the red light camera, but um, I don't, I, I don't like red light cameras for our city, I don't think that um, they promote safety as they attest to do. So for those reasons, I'm gonna say no.
It's name?
No.
Okay. Councilwoman Gleason.
Aye.
Councilman Potteet.
Aye.
Councilman Thompson.
Aye.
Council President Brown.
Item number eleven, from Public Safety and ordinance authorizing payment to Tri-Tech Software Systems, formerly Central Square for CAD and RMS software use covering the period March first, twenty twenty-five through May fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, so moved.
Second.
On a question? Hearing none, roll call.
Councilman Box Hill.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gleason.
Aye.
Councilman Potteet.
Aye.
Councilman Thompson.
Aye.
Council President Brown.
Aye.
Item number twelve, from City Council, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Mount Vernon adopting an ordinance um uh amending the city code to increase the maximum permitted driveway width, so moved.
Second.
On a question? Hearing none, roll call.
Councilman Box Hill.
Again, um, I wasn't convinced that this was the only way to solve. Um, I wasn't even sure that the, the issue was fully communicated to the council, what, why this was being done. And um increasing driveway widths is um gonna increase, to me, the, the problem that everybody complained about today in all our, our, our work sessions and um the, the um, the comprehensive plan sessions, parking, I mean, if everyone gets a bigger driveway, that's gonna decrease parking and we have a serious parking issue already in Mount Vernon, so for those reasons, I'm gonna say no at this time.
Is this on the question? Are we on the question?
Has to be.
Okay, I guess my question to you, Councilman, is we had a public hearing on this. We decided to be lead agency on this. Why, at the time of adoption, are you having these concerns?
Um, cause when the, the commissioner got online, I was, I asked the questions and I, I don't think, I got a clear answer as why we're doing this, it was like maybe it's illegal and flooding, um, if there were other alternatives, the, the question really wasn't answered for me, so that's why.
Got it, uh, roll call.
Councilwoman Gleason.
Aye.
Councilman Potteet.
Aye.
Councilman Thompson.
Aye.
Council President Brown.
Aye.
Item number thirteen, from City Council and ordinance to uh men chapter two-two-seven streets and sidewalks of the code of the City of Mount Vernon to increase the maximum permitted driveway width from twelve linear feet to eighteen linear feet, so moved.
Second.
On a question?
Sure, just to clarify, um, the comment that Councilmember Box Hill had, uh, this would be at the discretion of the commissioner.
Understood.
Whereas, I believe the issue is these changes, if and when they need to be made, wouldn't be at the discretion of the commissioner. So this just allows it to go faster, but he would still be mindful of parking issues that are on the street.
Got it.
But that's my comment.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Councilman Box Hill.
Uh, no.
Councilwoman Gleason.
Aye.
Councilman Potteet.
Aye.
Councilman Thompson.
Aye.
Council President Brown.
Aye. Alright, um, we have DC Mamak or Alkar online uh from the Building Department, uh, and she wanted to give some context to ask the item that we were about to amend on the floor. So DC, you can go ahead.
Good evening, council members, this is uh Deputy Commissioner Heidi Mamak. Uh, we have one RFP, the RFP number is zero zero four that we are trying to get approval hopefully tonight. This RFP, uh, we received two bids for this from Labella and Edinger. And our department, based on the uh our experience with Labella and their uh proposal, we choose to uh work with Labella on this RFP. And again, the number is zero zero four, I just want to make sure that we have the correct letter, not the RFQ. Uh, we are trying to get the approval on the RFP.
We, so we have on the agenda, uh, DC, we have the RFP zero zero four. The issue is the legislation that we have to sign to approve the contract with Labella mentions another company and we're not awarding it to the other company. We are only awarding it to Labella, so the legislation needs to be amended to reflect what our actual action is.
I, I understand, um, I didn't do the.
Yeah, Councilman Potteet has expressed the, the urgency of this, so we're trying to amend it on the floor so that, that it can be approved for you.
Thank you so much.
Alright, thank you.
Council President, before we wrap up, so is it the pleasure of the council to bring number six up after financing planning, or, get it, get it?
I don't know, I, I'm not the council, but that's what I think, so the council has time, okay, financing planner?
Sure, uh, number fourteen, um, an ordinance authorizing Controller to enter into agreement with um Twilio for provisions of SMS in connection with the UKG telestaff system, uh, so moved?
Second.
On a question? Hearing none, roll call.
Councilman Box Hill.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gleason.
Aye.
Councilman Potteet.
Aye.
Councilman Thompson.
Aye.
Council President Brown.
Aye.
Alright, fifteen, an ordinance authorizing Controller to enter an agreement with Prime Force for archiving the UKG workforce time and attendance data, so moved?
Second.
On the question? Hearing none, roll call.
Aye.
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 My gosh, Council President Brown.
So good, aye.
Alright, uh, number sixteen, an ordinance authorizing the installation of a portrait of former Controller Marine Walker in City Hall. Uh, so moved?
Second.
On a question? Hearing none, roll call.
Councilman Box Hill.
This is absolutely yes, I think um Controller Walker has been a part of history for the City of Mount Vernon, both as a black woman, as a woman of Caribbean descent. Um, I think she's done great things for the city and it's, it's only right that we honor her in this fashion, so, yes.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gleason.
I'd like to piggyback on that, even though she is not here in, in the flesh to come and come to our meetings, she always ends up sending encouragement through uh messages, so absolutely yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I'd like to comment too, um, after having done four years of service here, anyone that's done twenty-four years of service definitely should get a portrait on the wall, so thank you.
For you out there.
Thank you, Marine.
Count, uh, Councilman Potteet. Aye, thank you. Councilman Thompson.
Aye.
Council President Brown.
Aye.
Alright, uh, number seventeen, the add-on, from Department of Planning and Community Development, an ordinance transferring of funds within the Department of Planning of Community Development to allocate for payment of the GIS invoice, uh, so moved?
Second.
On a question? Hearing none, roll call.
Councilman Box Hill.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gleason.
Aye.
Councilman Potteet.
Aye.
Councilman Thompson.
Aye.
Council President Brown.
Aye. Alright, um, to, yeah, help expedite this, um, I'm gonna do the, the motions uh to, for the amendment on the floor, is that okay, Councilman Potteet?
Se- do you want a second, or?
No, I haven't done it yet, alright, so I move to remove Edinger Engineer Associates um from all parts of uh this legislation, it's item number six, clerk?
Yes.
In addition to that, um, I um would like to remove the S off of agreement. Off of agreements, and then a final edit is um, there's a sentence that says with Edinger Engineer Associates also deemed a qualified and reasonable vendor to strike that from the legislation as well, and that uh would encompass all of the amendments. So moved.
Second.
Alright, on a question? Hearing none, roll call.
This is the vote to make the changes?
Yes, this is a vote on amendment on the floor.
Uh, Councilman Box Hill.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gleason.
Aye.
Councilman Potteet.
Aye.
Councilman Thompson.
Aye.
Council President Brown.
Aye. Alright, Councilman Potteet, you can take over.
So item number six, Department of Buildings and ordinance authorizing the acceptance and award of requests for pro- for pro- for proposals. Number four, for third-party construction inspection and consulting services to Lab- Labella Associates, so moved.
Second.
On a question? Hearing none, roll call.
Councilman Box Hill.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gleason.
Aye.
Councilman Potteet.
Aye.
Councilman Thompson.
Aye.
Council President Brown.
Aye. That concludes our agenda.
He didn't say anything.
I said aye.
No, he didn't.
I didn't say aye?
Oh, she did, I didn't hear it, okay.
Wow, that's a Russian person.
We both didn't hear it.
Yeah.
Late, it's late, it's late.
Um, alright, um, council members, do you have anything to say? Comments, thoughts?
Um, thank you, our comms team, Denzel, staying late and just, you know, on top of everything, also our um purchasing manager, Camino Simmons. Thank you for being on it, and Antoinette, of course, always, thank you.
Are you just gonna leave our Commissioner Rucci in the back, our auxiliary commissioner?
And also I'd like to add to that, um, thank you to our Councilwoman-elect, Cynthia Turnquist Jones for sitting in with us today and also um getting your first taste of their questioning, so thank you.
Um, Councilwoman-elect, do you have any questions or comments? Any announcements for the public? No, you get to go. Corporation Council, thank you for being here as well. Um, have a good night, Mount Vernon, we gotta do a roll call.
Hey, hold on, hold on, hold on, not all of us have commented yet.
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Gleason.
Uh, I'm very, very proud to say congratulations to our Council President for becoming the youngest judge here in the City of Mount Vernon. And she not only made history as being the youngest, but now there are three sitting African-American women sitting on the bench here in the City of Mount Vernon, so we've made history. And I just wanted to tell you, I'm very proud of you, you put your mind to it. You worked really hard and uh congratulations on your win.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gleason, I just wanna make some clarifications to what she said, so we don't have fifty people signed up to say I'm not a judge yet. I don't get into the seat till January. Um, so I am a judge-elect, um, but I do appreciate the recognition, Councilwoman. Alright.
Okay, well, it's new to me, so.
Do we have a?
I make a motion that we adjourn this move, um, meeting, so moved.
Second.
Um, roll call.
Councilman Box Hill.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gleason.
Aye.
Councilman. Councilman Potte?
Aye.
Councilman Thompson?
Aye.
Council President Brown?
Say that letter, aye. All right, good night, Mount Vernon.